Good evening, everybody. I'm Tracy Keller and welcome to the Planning Board Workshop. Bill is absent this evening, so I'm going to assume the role of Chairperson. And with me is Meredith Randolph. And also present is, I'm gonna mess this up again, Gail Marshall and Alan Kimberley. I just couldn't get the last name. For anybody, if there is anybody or other public, you're encouraged to sign in in the chat function. And raise your hand if you care to speak and I'll try to see that you raise your hand and call upon it. And also Noel Musson, who is presenting things to us this evening.
It's more of a discussion.
Well, yeah, okay.
Do we have to vote to make you as acting chair or is that just an inherent?
I think so, she's a vice chair.
We may as well go ahead and go through the motions of it.
Yes, I make a motion to make you as acting chair.
My second thought.
All in favor? I mean.
It's long and short official.
So this is a continuation of our last workshop. So I don't think we required any further notification to the public. Okay, so with that, I guess we can begin our meeting somewhere near where we left off.
Yeah, well, I think what we left off was you were going to talk about the subdivision ordinance section. I have a draft subdivision in section.
One through six.
One through six. So I think as we're doing that, now this is kind of where it gets into a bit of more of the slot. But I would like, I think it's helpful to have the existing ordinance and the proposed ordinance handy. So you have both.
I don't have the proposed one, I don't know. Oh, here it is. I ran out the door and don't have either.
Well, I only have one copy. Alright, so we're going to figure out just sections one through six. And I've got some questions and then maybe we can just kind of go through it. It may be some maybe thicker than we want, or maybe there's some sections and then we can spend a lot more time on it. But I'm just gonna start with section one, we just worked our way through, is that what for you guys?
Yeah, yep.
So section one is the purposes of applicability section. I don't know if you were able to kind of compare this version versus the existing version. And we can either discuss which one seems feels better or combine language or trash both of them and start over again. Yes.
This one feels better and it certainly has a lot of objectives added to it. I will note that there at the bottom of that where it says comply with blah blah MRSA. You should have 30A in front of the MRS. Right?
I'll check.
I think it's like a typo.
Yep.
The review of the proposed subdivision and to comply with MRS section 4401, you have to have the title on there.
Yep.
But I liked it because it has a lot more clarity. We should, we should note that it does talk about. The new purposes include minimizing potential negative impacts from new subdivisions on neighboring properties in the town. Provide for expeditions and efficient process. Sufficient, sure, sufficient level of services and facilities are available to the residents of a new subdivision. And so on and so forth. So I like the fact that it more clearly articulates what a successful subdivision is supposed to look like and what it's supposed to do and not do. Alright, I do, I guess I'm liking the idea of in context of the other ordinance and the compatibility discussion, I like the idea of cannot damage normally held resources or can't detract from. I kind of feel like that kind of leaves an open place for any possible way that it really could just be. Well, detracts from the comment, you know, that that sort of boils down to in my mind, what neighbors could object to legitimately, that it detracts from their commonly held.
So are you saying the current, the proposed version versus the?
Yeah, that the new version just have a bit and maybe that it's even a section. And I guess the primary thing that I was thinking is when we have things that have happened on coves. So that a quiet cove is a commonly held resource to all of them. And you know, and if somebody were to come along and try to build a subdivision on a cove that that was nice and quiet, that the neighbors, it would, it would destroy the experience of the neighbors potentially, you know, and there would be grounds to object to that.
Yeah, I think what the purpose statement does is set the permission in the ordinance to have standards that would address what you're talking about. But in the absence of those standards, I don't think that would be a ground for denying. So, so what the purpose statement is, is it should be like a broad statement.
More broad.
And then what we're doing in the ordinance is making sure that the regulatory structure, not the structure, the regulations of the standards that are in the ordinance help you meet the purpose. So if it's not in the standard, then it doesn't matter if it's in the purpose, the purpose is that kind of more feel good than regulatory.
Right, right. And I think that your examples suggest the possibility of ending up with them sort of as the lines in the song go, them that, them that God shall get and them that not shall lose. Because to say that a cove in particular or whatever always gets to remain quiet no matter what, I don't, I don't, I don't read that in here. I read that as a legitimate concern for people to raise, but it does, it isn't necessarily dispositive of how it is to.
I think it's.
I mean, it's pretty clear language. It's, it's, it's to protect the environment, to promote the development of an economically sound and stable community. To assure that a sufficient level of services and facilities is available to the residents of the new subdivision that wants a subdivision and capable of supporting the proposed use of structures. To minimize potential negative impacts from new subdivisions on neighboring properties and on the town to provide for expeditions. And so you can minimize that, but you don't necessarily say, we get a quiet cove and we're always entitled in perpetuity to quiet. Whatever quiet means, I mean, that's the devil's in the details. But that aside, again, I think you're right, the language is, it's like, it's a, it's a, it's the mission statement.
Yes.
Not the actual parameters.
Yeah, that being said, good to have it in the mission statement. So then as we're going through, we can say, hey, do these standards accurately represent the policies that we want to have?
Because they're competing interests in this sometimes. And that's fine, and there always will be. So you need to say, well, we recognize those interests and those interests. And that's what we're going to be filtering through.
Right. And then I would also say, as we're going through this, keeping in mind that that the tool that we have here is for subdivisions and that there may be some things you want to just put a pin in and say, hey, is this objective really need to be addressed in the land ordinance, for example, like when we're zoning or uses on quiet coves, maybe the zone needs to change or you need to make sure the setbacks are greater from the water, those kind of just.
Yeah.
That's how.
Yeah, and that was, that's just one example, but I guess I feel like when, when we've had objections, you know, it's what what I think is legitimate is, is that a sort of broader view of, it shouldn't be right that one person's interest should be able to detract from many people's interests.
Alright, the other section under there is 1.2 applicability and that is I don't know if there's a direct correlation in the existing ordinance in terms of applicability, but what I did want to, I think it's probably under authority 2.1 in the existing ordinance, but this one, I have two versions, one I just, I did want to check with Andy about whether or not we should use the one in the sidebar versus the one that's already drafted. Number one. And number two, I do question, it's more of a question, it's a policy question, whether or not you want to include lots that are 40 or more acres as a subdivision lot for the purposes of its works, because you don't have to do that.
Can you educate me? I didn't, I need to understand what that means.
Yeah, so I believe in the subject.
The argument why.
What was that?
With the argument for why, what it is and why it should.
Right, so I think that in state law, they don't necessarily include lots, I think lots that are over 40 acres. I forgot to bring, I actually had my subdivision book and that was gonna be. But I think that they exempt lots of 40 acres. So and that you're currently, your ordinance doesn't.
Unless it was in portion of the shore length.
Yeah, so you don't, I think it's mainly because the state is saying like that lot is so big that the effects that we're having to deal with, the purpose of our subdivision review really is negated by having a bunch of 40 acre lots.
Or a. Oh, if the, and the breaking up and their lots themselves are 40 acres.
Or I think what it would be more likely if I were to create a subdivision and say it had 80 acres and I divide, you know, a bunch of them. Forty of those into five acre lots and I reserve a 40 acre lot for that, it doesn't necessarily count as part of the subdivision. It would be the other land I have a bag.
When I read it, I was thinking, why are they, why if it's 40 acres, does it not count as a subdivision I see? But it's not 40 acres being broken up, it's 40 acres, one lot. Yeah, I can, I can definitely see not bothering to insist that be a subdivision.
So in other words, if I buy, if you conclude this, if I buy a 40 acre lot and I want to build my home on it.
Yep.
It has, it would have to be processed through the subdivision ordinance, is that what that means?
No, it means that if you are creating a lot of 40 acres or more, it doesn't, it is not a subdivision.
You buy 200 acres and you divide it into four 50 acre lots. This is saying those, the division of 200 acres into 50 acre, four 50 acre lots is, they're just such massive lots that what does the subdivision rules don't apply.
I see, I see, okay.
Yeah, don't think you're gonna have to worry too much about it here, but. Because my experience, yeah, our, all of our experience about desert is, you say that and then like next week, you're gonna have a development of the 40 acre lot.
Yes.
It does seem, I, I just can't, I mean, the, the rules on roads and everything, like you've got such a long distance presumably to go, it doesn't seem.
I think the reason, the rationale is in the state law anyway, that yeah, 40 acre lot is big enough, 40 or more acres is big enough, that the things that you're really dealing with in the subdivision ordinance don't apply.
You don't need a buffer, you've got 40 acres.
Standards, but your current ordinance, I don't think requires, I think it's consistent with state law, I don't think 40 acres applies. But I actually, I would skip over this.
So does, so should this, i- if you're going to exclude that, shouldn't it mean a lot of 40 more acres shall not be counted as a subdivision law?
I think what I would say is I wouldn't address it at all, I wouldn't even put it. It's actually, the current ordinance on page one does say lots of 40 or more acres shall be counted as lots in.
Right, right.
There are lots in all districts.
Oh, yeah.
State statute, right?
Yeah.
I meant to bring that because that was a question I had, is do you even need that? And I can confirm.
Okay.
With Andy whether or not, you know, just by referencing state law, the supply, whatever. So we'll skip over that one, we won't worry too much about it right now. The other thing that I would just add to section 1.2 is if we went with something like the sidebar, that may be an area where you'd want to put in terms of applicability, where currently under 30 3.1.1 in the current ordinance where you deal with road standard review and also 3.4, which is the functional land divisions, those, that might be the area where we might put a reference to those. And then I have to check with Andy on that too.
So is the, the section in the comment is, is really just an effort to more specifically delineate what's in 30A, this development?
It's a little more specific.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you might want to say included but not limited to. If you're gonna do that, you leave, you leave the first applicability sentence and say that this includes but is not limited to, and then the sidebar. Because 30A may change.
Yep.
I guess if we, if we have the, the option of excluding lots of 40 acres or more, it seems sensible to. Lightens our load to something that's.
Well, work, well, I mean, if everybody was, I don't know, I, I just wanted, I need to clarify like all of that, but I guess my, my, it was more of a policy question as I'm clarifying, you know, does this make sense or not? Do you even need that in there? Because in other places I've seen that it doesn't, that isn't even mentioned, so.
Yeah, if it's included, then I wouldn't, I don't see the sentence needing to include 40 acres, I don't know why you'd be thinking that, well, anyway.
Got it. Alright, section two, authority and administration. This is the same, pretty much the same, some, not the same language, but the structure of section two of your existing ordinance is also authority and administration. And this one just sort of is a little more concise, I think.
Yes.
So I would urge you to go this direction instead of the other way. And then I don't have an attractive date, obviously, because it hasn't been adopted yet.
So it says under the subdivision, it says that talks about the division of lots into three or more dwelling units. So then determining whether a tract of parcel of land divided into three or more lots. The first division of the tract of parcels considered to create the first two lots and the next dividing, and then it goes on to say, unless a lot of 40 acres or more must be counted as a lot except to when a municipality has by ordinance, while the municipal review authority has by regulation, elected not to count lots of 40 acres of, of 40 or more acres as lot for the purpose of the subject that when the parcel of land being divided is located entirely outside any shoreline area. And that defines the statute.
Yep.
Is shoreline area.
So.
I mean, it's part of me that wonders as a matter of public policy, just because somebody can buy a huge piece of land. And why would we exempt them from the roles everybody else has to play by?
Sure.
That's.
The policy currently is to include lots of 40 acres, so it wouldn't, it would be a shift to exclude.
And if it doesn't say anything about it, do we have to specifically, specifically say?
I think it would.
I think it's assumed it's included unless you specifically.
It's in the shoreline, it's on, you gotta have.
Yes, well, that's gonna happen in there.
And it would be included by reference to the state law.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. The ease of, of functionality, the ease of for the planning board is, for me, would not be an issue. You know, that is the work we don't have to do. I don't. I want to know that this is equity and first and foremost, I'm gonna build in there.
Yep.
Well, I guess I boil it down to also wanting to not make divisions of land that are into small quantities of like four lots, I don't think follow this full subdivision. I guess mostly it's the road thing, that I don't think that we need to be demanding super highways into every little division of land. It's, it's not beneficial to any, anybody. I mean, as long as the fire chief says that he can adequately access the houses, I don't understand why we have this. It's one thing if they're going into 20 lots, that they really need to build a road. And I guess when I hear the 40 acre thing, I think that's, it's that I, my brain is assuming that it would only be three, four lots that we're talking about, or cutting off a chunk that they don't plan to develop. You know, that it's.
Or they build a compound that has god knows how many activities going on there. You know, their rifle range and their tennis court and their swimming pool and their athletic facility and their guest lodges and their, I mean.
But that wouldn't be division of a lot, that would be a single lot with.
No, but I'm saying in terms of what you need for access to be able to deal. See, first of all, I think we're talking about the road ordinance, are we not? We're not, at this moment, we're not actually talking about.
So I was just trying to understand, I think, where is, which is, you know, I'm just gonna summarize and if I get along with it, but that some lots like the back area you're thinking might not have the size, might not be as dense of a development, which will require like a wider road, for example.
Or if you, if you had, as an environmentalist, you know, if you had 200, you bought a 200 acre lot and you said, I want to develop the front half of it and I want to leave 40 acres to be natural open environment, I guess I just would say, you know, that's a big, that's preservation of land and I shouldn't have to follow all the subdivision scrutiny because it should allow for maybe that's not, maybe it's in a 40 acre, but I guess that's what, that large of a lot, that's what I envisioned, is that somebody sort of.
I think there's, there are opportunities for somebody to talk about having a road that, that they're never going to ask the town to take over. And, and that, that that might be permitted. And that there, then, and that it wouldn't be meet the standards.
Yep.
It's what we're constantly dealing with.
Yeah.
I mean.
Trying to address that too.
Yeah. Non-conforming roads and subdivisions that didn't get their initial roads and then we have this incredibly difficult road to build and they're not the ones who developed the subdivision in the first place, but they want to build a house on, they're one of the lots, so now they have to bring in a superhighway to be able to build their house.
Yeah. Let's just think, subdivision sometimes is like a, you know, it's a geometry on a plan, right?
Right.
Where we are, these are how many lots we're doing, like the easy option is if you're just saying, I want to reserve the remainder of the 40 of my property, 40 to whatever many acres, it's just gonna be like other land of, and it would be included in the approved subdivision as a lot, but not necessarily like have to, you know, develop it, so you don't need to build a bunch of buildings. It just depends on how you lay out the lot. Or it could just be open space, so you're gonna call it something different, you know, this lot will be open space, but we're, we're providing through the subdivision process, we're providing, you know, access to it because there is always the potential for something to happen beyond it. So you want to make sure you are planning for like these back lots to have access to them, otherwise they're you know, that's not part of the thinking in the subdivision layout. I'm not sure it's a big deal to include it or not include it, to be honest with you. I think we've already probably spent more time thinking about that thing, but, but your road standard question is a really interesting one that we're gonna get to, I think, when we get to that section.
Well, and it goes along with ours, the utility brought in and everything, and I guess I, you know, just as a you wanted to leave that fully figures, if the idea was to leave it open and you say, well, you still have to put a road to it and have to bring the utilities to it, that is encouragement of development rather than what the goal might be is to preserve.
But again, that's in the wooze, not.
Well, how you develop that 40 acres is in the wooze, so what's, how, how you create that or get to that is not in the wooze, right?
But I mean, the road requirements, right?
The road requirements in the subdivision ordinance.
Alright, I'm gonna go back and look again.
That's where we want them. Because that is you guys who make lawyers.
Yeah.
And so subdivision good. Sometimes. Alright, let's move on. So we're moving past authority, we've got section 2.2, that is amendments to this ordinance, that's the equivalent of section nine in the existing ordinance. This one is actually kind of a little shorter than the one that's in section nine. I don't know. I'm not sure I have any particular preference, I think it's pretty straightforward.
I think that the brevity is appropriate.
All you follow this is requiring a public hearing. And you have to notify the public in 14 days in advance. So you have to go to a town meeting, before you do that, you have to have a public hearing. Before you do that, you have to notify the public 14 days in advance, that's pretty much it. One thing that I did notice that I do want to ask Andy about is under section nine, one, three of the current ordinance, there's a section that says the planning board can name, after a public hearing, and then ask, amend or repeal additional reasonable regulations which shall control until amended, repealed or replaced by regulations adopted by the next town meeting, so.
Why is that not interesting?
What that says is that you, as a planning board, over the course of a year could say, oh, you know what? We don't like the way that this was and we're gonna amend it now. And it's that would, and if you all voted for it, or if you voted for it, the board, then it would be in effect, that those amendments or edits would be in effect until you got to the town meeting and then the town meeting would have to officially adopt it.
Yeah, but if, if the planning board wanted to throw some sort of coup at, or some, whatever. And they say, right, and then they say, okay, so we like, we like our ordinance and we'll just enact that and you take it to plan meeting, the town says, no, we hate that. And they say, okay, and next meeting they say, we're gonna put our stuff again, you know?
Yeah.
I think it's very problematic.
I, I do too.
But I do want to ask because I did, I think I heard another, I was at another meeting, and I was just talking about subdivision ordinance creation, and I think she actually mentioned something like the planning board does have the ability to amend a subdivision ordinance, and I'm like, what? I don't even know how that's possible, but I think it's problematic, it's not included in this, in the new draft.
Okay. I think, I think we should stick with the town, we should be representing the town, yeah.
But it's a really interesting provision, so I gotta ask about it. And I never noticed it, you know, all the times I've read the subdivision.
What if you like got in, yeah, had somebody come in and they said, this doesn't make any sense, and they convinced the planning board to alter it and they go alter it? And then you take and you approve the subdivision and say, okay, you know, you, you can do whatever.
So many problems.
And then you go to the town meeting and everybody says, no, like, well, too late. No, that doesn't work, no.
I'm sure there's more constraints there in, under like case law or something, but it does seem I don't know, it seems a little. What we want to deal with, so it's not included in section 2.2 of the new, new draft.
Thank you.
Section 2.3 is the interpretations and conflicts and severability, there's section eight in your existing ordinance, which pretty much does the same thing. So you got it all clear on.
It's clear.
Why that important?
Yeah.
We don't have to go over all the definitions, or?
No, so I might.
Well, I have some.
But I was gonna say, I'm gonna do a word search at the end to make sure that we are including definitions of terms that are actually in there. But I would add, if, if you have already read it and said, hey, we need to add that, I didn't see a definition for this, this or this, then now would be a great time to mention it.
I have. First of all, I like 3.1, the construction of language.
Yeah.
I, I, that's really important to state that, and it's really clear, shall means may means, making those clear distinctions for laypeople, I think is really, for all us is a reminder, is really useful. The definition of terms are, I, I'm curious about where these all came from, because they're much more comprehensive and I think much better than what's kind of scarrishot in the existing ordinance, so I'm just, it is. And another question I have is, are all of these definitions, I didn't go back through and look, compare them to 30A? Are they all compatible, do you know, with the terms in 30A?
Yep, and I think they are, and so to answer the first question is like, this is a model that I, so I didn't create, I like the model.
Yeah, I do too.
And what we're gonna do is, again, I think it's important to kind of do a word search for, a word search for a budget property and just make sure that the terms that are in here are used and then we have to also do kind of the reverse at some point and make sure you have the all the definitions.
We didn't define time. And then some places in the ordinance, it talks about a week.
Yep.
And in other places, it talks about number of days.
Like business days or?
Well, it doesn't say business days, so I think we should probably define time somewhere or. Well, it doesn't say business days, so I think we should def- probably define time somewhere, or, or put it in. Construction of language or wherever we wanna do it, but, but, um. I, 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 when we talk about, um. When we get into talking about the process. There's sometimes been said, you've gotta do this within a certain period of time, and then another one is a week, and I felt like, well. Suppose Monday is a holiday and, you know, so we'll clarify, we should clarify what that means.
Sure.
And actually, that's all I have, the definitions. Well, I did read them.
Great. Uh, I do need to read them again, and also make sure that they are. Some of them are mainly between based on some things that we already have here, so. Alright, so now we're on to section four. Administrative procedures and fees. Uh, let's see, so the agenda submission deadline, applicant attendance required, that is a kind of a new section. There are some differences to some of that in other parts of the ordinance. But it's sort of like a right up front, you know? We may wanna, I, I may wanna add the chairboard, the, the planning board chairperson or designated, so it really isn't the chair, it's probably more like the town. Um, prepares the written notice.
Uh, yes.
Kim.
Yeah, they don't do that.
Right. Or designated, which would be like. Or whoever.
The town has it.
Yep. And then, um. I did have a question about the timeline, so. I feel, uh, fourteen days is pretty standard, but that's not how we operate here because of the notification requirement, so do we wanna do it like thirty days?
So. Or a submission, you mean?
So we.
Placing on your agenda.
If we wanna be on the agenda, we have to submit an application within. Thirty days or fourteen days, or it's more than that. Because of the, the paper that we use. Like, if you just use the Bangor deal, and you could do that in fourteen days.
Yeah, but it all, is this, but this is, you don't have to, agenda submission deadline, applicant attend, um. This isn't publication, right? This isn't public notice.
Well, if I wanna be on, if I wanna be on an application, if I'm gonna be on a board meeting, if I submit an applicant, an application to the planning board. To be on the agenda. I mean, I guess I could do that.
And that's for any point in the process, right? It's not just for the preliminary.
And you're gonna be requiring public hearings.
Um, the sketch plan is not a public hearing.
But doesn't four point one apply to all hearings?
Yes.
That's the problem.
This is administrative procedures and fees, I mean, this is.
It's the agenda, submission deadlines.
This is under where's your public hearings, is this all, this is just the section right here that talks about any of that?
No, there's some in the later sections too.
So, how much time do you need to get it published in the paper? Oh, depends, I mean, because we don't do sketch plan, uh, sketch plans, we don't do. Typically, I, actually, I do put it in the paper, just courtesy, but we don't, it doesn't require it. We don't notify butters.
Right, and I just was thinking, so, but you publish the agenda for a meeting two weeks ahead of time, right?
We do it as, yeah, as soon as the deadline is, we put them, we put them off. And we post them in the, um.
So fourteen days gives you, if, regardless of what it is, if somebody submits something with fourteen days for a public hearing, that gives you enough time?
Public hearing, I have to get it, if we're gonna do the same thing, the first notice has to go in fourteen days before the public hearing day. And then I have to do another one seven days before the meeting.
So, and with the way that our.
That's only public hearings.
But if it, if it were to fall under a public hearing and they only submit it fourteen days ahead of time.
They couldn't get it.
That's why he's, so that's what he's getting at, maybe we can maybe.
This is just for public hearing.
But we keep on defaulting to it as we're going along of like you, you're gonna submit more information before. It seems to me it's just sensible to make sure that whatever that timeline is, it gives enough time. To be, for whatever reason, for the town, be able to advertise it.
Well, yeah, and the advertising is only a public hearing.
Today.
Anna bars, today.
Right.
I don't know what you're proposing now, I mean, how many times are we gonna have to notify?
Well, I think.
No, just, just for the public hearing.
Right now.
Just for the final.
Right now, what we done, or what we've done in the past, I should say, is. Sketch plan, I put it in the paper as a courtesy. I don't notify butters. Completeness review, I notify all the butters, saying we got an application, you're welcome to come review it, and then public hearing. I do it twice in the paper.
Right.
Fourteen days for the public hearing, and then a week before the public.
I don't, there's no sketch, just, under the sketch plan process, there's no requirement for a public hearing. Under the final plan review, there is a requirement, there is a public hearing.
So final is public hearing, or is that completeness?
Yep, that's, that's, in this process, it's basically. Final, it's almost like what we're doing is compressing the terminology into two different things, one is a sketch plan. Which you get a little more discussion. And then the second one is, we're gonna have, I'm gonna submit to you after the sketch plan in the final plan review, and then under the final plan review, there's a determination of. Completeness, then you have a public hearing, and a final approval, so it's the same steps, it's just consolidated into one, into two.
It's more meetings.
Terms, it's the same number of meetings.
Yeah, it is, but I think what we need to, I think this gets to another issue, I think this board really needs to grapple with, and that's public comment. We need a clearer policy, I think, about when. Not taking anything about the primacy or importance of, of public comment, it's, it's fundamental and it's, and it's necessary and good to have a full. Opportunity to be heard, but we need a policy. About when the board is doing business in public versus when the board is in a public hearing. And we're always doing business in public. But in a process like this, we should be clear about when public comment is, is, is to be. Heard. And so you don't necessarily need to put a notice in the paper so people can show up and. And be heard on the sketch plan or the preliminary. I mean, people are entitled to come, and people are entitled to learn about what the plan is, and then at the final plan review. You come and, and you're, part of that process is you're heard. I, otherwise, otherwise it just goes on and on and on and on, and it's repetitive, I mean, we've, we've seen that.
And I, I will object, because I think the, the policy is. There, if we had wanted to enforce it, and it has been our choice to do it, the way that we've done it in the past, and I think it's worked very well. For the community, I think it allows, we've, we've always prioritized the interests of the community and, and. Trying to let people heard, be heard.
But to have people be heard and be heard and be repetitive is not conducive to. A municipal board or body. That, that looks like it's functioning, let alone whether it is or not, that looks like it's functioning at. The level it should be, that people should have a right to expect it's functioning at, and that's. What I think, I think we need to grapple that issue, and I think it's a longer conversation, but.
I think you end up ste- letting the applicant control the conversation, you give the public a very small window in your scenario. To face their objection and the applicant can steamroll. Um, if we had cut people off, we wouldn't have heard half of, you know, we followed and, and said, here's the public hearing. Here's when we listen to you, now we're shutting you down.
How many times do you need to have somebody ask you where the trash cans are gonna be? In order to actually register that, you need to figure out if the trash cans are an issue. I mean, this stuff happened over and over and over. In that hearing, and I don't think that was, that was advancing a robust public discussion, I think what it primarily did is. Bobbed down the public discussion and the decision-making process, again. It is fundamentally critical that people have a right to be fully heard. But not, but it's, but in no decision-making body that I've ever participated in. Has it been suggested that hearing the same stuff over and over and over multiple times, oftentimes from the same person. Is, is necessary or appropriate to, to actually be heard, I, I don't, I think it just. I don't, I don't think that's helpful, and I, I don't mean to get too far afield here, but I do think that needs to be addressed. In all of these ordinances, how? How and when, let somebody come, let them present their plan, let them present their preliminary plan. The public can come and sit here and take notes, or take note of what it is that somebody's proposing. And be better informed, so that when they finally do come, and, and you're getting into the weeds. And that gets, also gets into the question of what's a sketch plan review for? I think that should be much more ministerial than it is, than it has been, I think the sketch plan review, the completeness review. Is something that should be, um. Not perfunctory, but it doesn't get into every single aspect, like have you, have you labeled the size of all the trees? The board retains the right, and it says this numerous times in here, to ask for granular detail at any stage in the process, including the final stage. And I think that the board, I've heard this board struggle with the notion of. Of getting through completeness and treating that like a public hearing. And then doing it all, kind of doing it all over again for the pa- final plan review. I don't think that helps a clarity of purpose or decision-making. To do, I think there's ways to do that, that gets you a thorough her- hearing, a thorough opportunity to, to hear and address. Public concerns. And make it flow in a way that's fair to everybody, and that, and that. Functions. As best it can under circumstances, so, I, I. I think we should be mindful of what it is that when we go through this, like, what's the sketch plan review, what is it really? And what needs to happen during that process, not like, wow, we gotta really look very carefully at every document. Correct me if I'm wrong, I wanna be told that I'm wrong, right here, so if I'm wrong. I wanna hear that, I don't wanna not hear that, but, um, so that's my perception of it.
Yeah, I think some of butters could bring up, up some, uh, very important. Uh, ideas with something that's happening next to them.
Sure.
And I'd wanna be.
Sure.
I'd wanna be in, on ground zero, if somebody was doing something right next to me. And not, not have to wait until it's coming to the final thing, when they're gonna have the final thing and then vote at the end.
And that we've gone through all the process and said, okay, your buffer's good, your this is that, that, and then open up a public hearing, and we've already told them. It's good, and the public say, but you didn't think about this, I mean, it all go, I mean, the public.
Well, you get in the public hearing at the beginning.
But, but then they haven't heard the argument, you have to have it integrated, I mean, it, they have the argument of the applicant. And then, and then we discuss it, and if we don't give the public the opportunity, it's like not allowing the opponent to be. Involved in, in the process.
And I'm not proposing that at all, I'm not, I'm just saying that, that. Man, uh, my, my watching the process suggests to me that it could, people could be fully heard. Could have all of their rights and concerns fully heard and protected, if you figure out strategically, where's the best place to do that? In this process.
One, one doesn't always, you know, have all their thoughts together at just one meeting. You know, you go to, you find out about it, and then you come up with more, you know, issues.
The applicant has the whole entire process of three meetings, and if we give them one defined little arena, which the. Public is allowed to speak in, there just isn't any way, I mean, it, it has been there, and we have often. Through the party and through the other thing, discussed whether we wanna give the public the opportunity, we could have cut them off. It was, it wasn't a policy, it was always been our choice.
That, I think that there's a pre- local practice, and then there's the actual, what the ordinance says. So you could decide at any point that you wanna op- you wanna solicit public comment, but there is a process that you're supposed to go through. And. Having sat on at least one side of the fence a few times, like, sometimes it is more, the vocal practice. Needs to be constrained just a little bit, because we're hearing the same thing over and over again, it's not gonna change anything, but I think I've said this before, as an. Another, uh, benefit of getting comment during the sketch plan phase. Is that you get a sense of what the concerns are, so you have a better chance to try to figure out what those things are.
Not, not without better notification or in the paper.
I'm like, that's, they don't know that it's happening.
Yeah, so maybe we should add.
No, no more.
Then you charge the applicant for that. That's the, that's what you're allowed to do.
Sure. Hundred dollar for an application fee, and fifty, that's ridiculous.
The current ordinance, Kim, this is a whole new ordinance, you don't put the.
But the bonus selection, but the old ones that can do fees.
I think you, then you should say to them, this is what the fee is, and you don't have, you don't even have to have the bonus selection side. That, that you're gonna charge your butters, you're gonna charge the applicant for your expenses, like, that's very common.
Yes.
Just do it.
Well, find the fee schedule on the town's website, is it hidden?
Not on it. How about the.
Should be.
Uh, a butter's all being notified before the sketch plan, and then the public notice being. Issued before the public hearing, that's that. Actually, I shouldn't say that, it is, it's on, it's the, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the third, fourth page on the building firm application, that's on the website.
Right, we get lists of butters with, like, well, it's not subdivision, but we've got this conditional use.
Yeah, that's all on one.
So.
Form, that's a tax of the building firm application, the fees.
Yeah, or maybe you move the, move to the public hearing. I mean, this is the way the process typically works, we're gonna come in and do a sketch plan review in front of the planning board, and we, there's a bunch of things that we need to kind of talk about. I wanna, we don't wanna spend, um, all of our resources coming up with a plan that isn't gonna address X, Y, and Z concerns, like. Here's some waivers that we think we should be getting for this project, what do you think about that? It's all laid out here, it's a very, it's a good way. To get a feel for the project without having expended tons of resources on the project. By the time you get to final plan, people are already entrenched in certain. In a, in an approach, so in my mind, you wanna make the sketch plan as, as helpful as possible, so that you don't. You know, run into some unknowns, and I think that will actually would probably. Lead to the end result of saying, we already heard this comment in the sketch plan phase, we don't need to talk about it anymore, the applicant already addressed it, or something like that. But I'll have to think about that a little bit, and then the next part of the process is, we're gonna fight for something. You can't have a public hearing for something you don't know what it is. So let's have, we need to submit an application, and then typically the board would determine whether or not that application is complete enough to review. There's an administrative. Challenge there, in that, that, the completeness review is very administrative, like, did you submit something?
Oh, that's a fun.
Did you submit this so that we can review this standard? Did you submit this so that we can review this standard? Those are the things that you need to, to do. In a completeness review, that's it.
Yes.
That's the whole point of a completeness review, great, it's complete, now let's go to.
Not are we happy with what is in there, is it there?
Yep. Then you go to public hearing, then you do final plan approval, that's the way it should work. I think that's pretty much what's left here, but.
I, I, it would seem like, well, I would think that if you could send out the notice to the butters before the sub, before the first meeting.
Sure.
And then. That maybe that would alleviate Kim's concern, but it also would, the people who are gonna be the most concerned. Ninety percent of the time are gonna be those direct butters.
Yeah.
So to let those people know, and then if it's an issue and it's a hot item, they can spread the word, uh, but. I would think that, that you're primarily concerned about the butters.
Yep.
And you want them weighing in right at the beginning, because a vast majority of the time, the public hearing, like you even said, just improves the plan, it just. Addresses everybody's concerns, you know, things become better.
The earlier input always improves the plan, sometimes the later input just makes for an argument.
Okay, there's some, but I guess, I, I don't, I don't feel like we've had, I totally agree that people repeat themselves, but I feel like. Um, when there were a lot of people in the town involved, they didn't realize that somebody else had already said it. Or they felt they could say it in a different way, you know, and so, um. I, I guess, I don't, I don't know that there's a way to organize. I, I guess, I don't, I don't know that there's a way to organize things to not get people to repeat themselves because.
Well, I think you, you structure the public hearing to, to allow that and facilitate. A more inclusive process and then you structure other parts of the review so that you don't get that. Your, your final review process is your final review process, you don't take. Extraneous public comments during the final review, but your public, public hearing. You know, however, however the board wants to facilitate that, maybe it's really up to the board, it's the public meeting to talk about this project, so let's, let's have it, let's have at it. You know, is it, if I were an applicant in that situation, most of the time, I just feel like my job is to sit back and listen. To what all the comments are, just to figure out if there's anything we need to change. About our, the plan. To help answer those concerns, are they legitimate concerns, or are they just concerns that we're just not gonna address? What other information do we need to provide to the board in order to help? The board understand. That this concern is already dealt with, like there's a whole set of things that go through your mind, you're sitting there listening to people like.
Yeah, and I guess I just, it still is like the, the final process that we go through division, like are we happy with their. Application of this section and you can hear the conversation and the applicants. Providing information and influencing the way that they're reading it, the public hearing's already happened. And are like, yeah, okay, yeah, that would follow your, your legitimate and somebody's saying, going. And if they were only allowed to talk, be like, oh, we didn't look at it that way. But we shut them off and we didn't get to, you know, that discussion hasn't happened, we had the public hearing ahead of time. We closed the door on.
Yeah.
And it's happened, I mean, we've gone down things and we thought. Yep, yep, applicants did a great job and then somebody says, yeah, but, but look at it this way, and I go. Didn't look at it that way, yeah, you got a good point.
Yeah. Jerry.
Yeah, Jerry, Jerry, go ahead.
Well, kind of two things. A lot of towns have a public hearing section at every meeting for ten or fifteen minutes where they hear the public. Whether it's at the end of the meeting or the beginning. And then the public theoretically. Sits quietly and listens and at the next meeting, they can again have a few minutes to express their opinions. The other thing is that the planning board has the discretion to say. You've said that already.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I think, you know, at a public hearing, I, I agree, the. Some things get better with public participation early on in the process. And changes are made. But there's a limit to them just jumping in every twenty minutes and saying, what if they have pickup trucks? What about our children riding their bikes on the road? And that happened again and again and again, and that's not productive.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think what Meredith is saying is not. That it's, so again, there's what's in the ordinance and then there's. Practice and so. That's where the slippery slope comes in, but what's in the ordinance is gonna allow the board to be as flexible as they want, you just as a board need to decide, okay. You know, be mindful of a process and I'm not saying that you're not that way, I'm just saying that's where the difference, because, you know, we're gonna set it up. So that there's a, there's a process that you need to follow and then the board. As it does, is gonna decide, okay, we're gonna. They say we're gonna kind of manage that process within our own local. Lens, if you will, that's how.
Yeah, I, I feel like they, then there's a, you know, people say things and nothing's returned to them and like the kids and bikes kept on coming up. And if we just said, that argument has no teeth to it, like there's just nothing in the code, there's nothing in. There's nothing to that argument, if somebody just shut that down at the first time it was made, then nobody would have brought it up again, but people are like, no. We can get people to worry about the kids, get the public wrong.
Which responsibility was that?
It was, it was the planning board's responsibility. Right?
It's how you wanna facilitate.
But they didn't hear a decision. Of that, like we, we hear your argument. You have. It, it doesn't have any place in the code.
Or you don't even need to make that determination, we, thank you, we've heard that argument.
And we will.
Duly noted.
Yes, those, that will get addressed, all of this concern will get addressed. At this phase in the process. Move on.
But going back to Jerry's comment, I've never attended a school board meeting that doesn't have a public comment section either at the beginning or the end or both.
But that makes every public, every meeting a public hearing, right?
No, it does not, it's an open public comment, I could come to the, and usually. The rule is. That the board will not address what people have said in public comment. So they can come and talk about something on the agenda, or they can talk about how they think that we ought to have a, a color requirements for all new houses or what, I mean. It doesn't matter what they wanna talk about as long as it's germane to the purview of the, of the planning board. And we don't engage with them. On the subject, it's noted, it's in, it's in the agenda, I mean, it's in the minutes and that's, and that's it. Um. If it's something that needs to be addressed, you should assume that the planning board or the chair of the board is gonna take responsibility for seeing that it gets addressed, but it is not a public hearing. It is public comment at a, at a meeting held in public.
So Jerry couldn't talk until. He couldn't have just input, included his. Thoughts on this until we gave him the allotted time at the very end of the meeting.
True.
Correct, or the very beginning.
And that's where I'm like, it, it, I don't, it doesn't feel like we're allowing the public to participate when it's close up like that.
Speaking of which.
Yes.
I'm gonna pop in again.
So not till the end of the meeting.
If, if there was a, a ten or fif, ten or twenty minute or fifteen minute session on either end of the meeting, I would have made my comments then. I knew I was gonna make them before I came into the meeting, pretty much. And I would make my comments. But then we, we wouldn't be discussing it any further till next time.
And it's local practice, so you guys can talk about how you wanna manage, manager. Means it's, it would be advertised as public comment period anyway in their.
The board has a responsibility to the town and to the applicants before it. To conduct the business on the agenda for that night in as effective and efficient manner as possible, not cutting anybody off. But, but doing it in that way and. And knowing that there's public comment. A public comment session helps organize that, so people are heard. It's important, it's not that it's not. Important that people are heard, but your core responsibility is to address what's on your agenda. That you, that you've notified the public in advance is going to be the work you're gonna be doing. That's. That's why it's there and.
We're just a, a small community though, and having people. You know, give their comments. I don't think is all that disruptive, you know, we did have a good. Uh. Disruption in the last big one. But I think that's rare.
We've never had to call in a police officer before, that was, I mean, as long as I've been on the board, that was a first. But, but, but. But there's a difference between a meeting like this. And a meeting when the room's full.
We don't have rooms full. It's rare to ever have a room full.
Also, keep in mind, that was just ignorance on somebody that caused this police officer to be here.
Yeah.
And that. Everybody was pretty civil.
That's not the issue, that's, that's.
It was, it was the issue for the police officer. I, I guess, it also, it also just comes down to whether we feel like. We as a board feel like the way that we've been doing it has been working well and having gone through the quarry ordinance and all these seated issues. I felt like our bounds of allowing public hearing, we knew, we knew all along that we could. Hold back the public more than we did. Process, it's all you heard through that whole meeting and that's why. Everybody got to speak over and over and over because they was, it's a very contentious. You know, personal application to people and they felt they needed their due process that they couldn't speak, so go let them speak. That's what happens and it was repetitive, time after time after time.
Everybody uses words like that and they don't actually know what they mean, you're discriminating against me. That's another one, everybody uses those words, but they don't know what they mean oftentimes with all respect, because they have specific legal meanings. And you need, that, that's when the, the board chair needs to turn and get advice from council. Are they actually, what is due process in this case and are they actually having their due process needs met, if they are? Then you have to say, I'm sorry, I respectfully disagree, here's how your due process needs have been met and, and. But I'm not, I mean, I'm not commenting specifically on that case, but in, but in situations like that.
I, I think that one of the things that I've learned about planning board because I don't have any other experience with lawyers is that, and I know that you were a lawyer. Or you are a lawyer, that, um. What I have seen is that lawyers know that it's not necess, not so much about having the best. Um. Facts, it's about controlling the conversation. And definitely through the quarry, it was all about controlling. The conversation, controlling the viewpoint and that's what I don't want to happen is that we allow. The applicant to have, to completely control the conversation and the direction of the conversation and give little boxes. That the, that the public is held out. At, the plant, the quarry meeting wouldn't have, the quarry process wouldn't have gone at all the same way if we had allowed the applicant. To control the whole entire process and only, and, and shut out the public to these little windows that they weren't. Allowed to influence the, the thinking. They can only be heard as if they had an attorney. Because that's how it was going. And it did appear. They did four or five attorneys. And they would say, you know, the, the only people who are allowed to talk are the attorneys and I thought, so this is like financial bias that you have to be able to hire a lawyer to be heard.
Well, those are all different issues than what I'm kind of talking about, I'm not proposing, first of all, that an applicant ever. Drive the bus on what the planning board is and isn't doing and how it's conducting itself. The planning board should be driving the bus.
But we're having this conversation and if Jerry isn't allowed to. Dive into the conversation that we're having. This is the control of the conversation and if he's, if the, his comments. Kicked out to the end or the beginning. You don't get to have influence on the, the flow of the thinking.
Because you're not a planning board member, I, I agree. This is an entirely different scenario than a scenario in which you have a contested application. In those situations, you need, in order to be fair to everybody. You, I mean, a lot of what happened in that process, I thought wasn't fair to the applicant. Right, times, the way it just sort of meandered at times. I think that you have to exert some sort of control, if you will. Over the process in order to facilitate. An orderly ability by everyone to be heard. Fully. But not to the point where it's just, people are just trying to talk it to death in order to prevail. Uh, there's a distinction there, I mean, just. I, I'm repeating myself now, so I don't want to do that anymore, so. I got, I think I got us way off the track here. On this subject, but I do think it's important for us to somehow grapple with this and build it in. To this and your idea of having the ability to have. People particularly a butters comment during the sketch plan is a very valid one, I think, you know, that certainly would shade. Would change my perspective on how I think public comment should flow. Um, and I, you know, I value that, um.
To me, that's the most effective time to influence any project and. I also think by the time, you know. This is maybe my own sort of personal view on it, but. Like, it's an interesting perspective that. We all get to weigh in on these things at a certain point in a review process, like that. The town should have already decided in a lot of ways, that your policy decisions were made before an application or even becomes before you.
Yeah.
So the influence of all these things, um, you know. Is helpful in a lot of ways, but it's also, you have to be mindful of the fact that a lot of people aren't even in front of a planning board. If they don't already know that the thing that they're applying for is something that should be improved.
Right.
That's the way it is, like that's the only reason, we're, we're here to review a certain set of standards.
The quarry?
But in the quarry, I don't, I wasn't part of the quarry thing, so I can't say anything about that, but theoretically. Even that was one of those things that the town made a policy decision on, here's something that you need to apply. And then you need to make a decision, let the chips fall where they may.
I think they played us. Think the quarry people. Playing the town from the beginning, they just, they maneuver the system and keep getting it to.
Yep, maybe there's a, there's definitely a flaw in the policy that was adopted then. The rules related to that policy need to be modified. I worked on that one, so I could say, yeah, sure, there's a lot to do there, but.
And that always happens, that's, I mean, that's, they're living, breathing documents and you're always gonna be.
But I, I think there's a balance in both perspectives where you have to facilitate, you want to facilitate good public process.
Yes.
Because it makes for a better project. And then you want to facilitate the process moving forward away from the public. Process because you're not getting value from that anymore, I don't know where that is. But, but at some point, it's a, it's a decision that a board needs to make, it's not gonna be built into the ordinance.
I guess, I think it's unfortunate that the, that the specific subdivision. That happened right before this was the one that, because we've never had one that, a subdivision ordinance that went back contentious and that it, that it was. That people were making arguments that weren't relevant to the code and stuff like that, so I think it's. You guys are responding to one that, that went kind of off the rails, but generally. The way we've been doing it has served us very well and allowed, and I think really. Produced good thought. Could produce good conversation within our small community. You know.
I think it still could in a, in a more structured way. But I, I'm, I'm not coming at it from that one meeting, I've been through a lot of subdivision applications and it's not, so this is not. Like this is a one-off. Here for me, but you know, it's kind of the same everywhere, but it's like you have to. Be a little more structured sometimes so you can actually get through it and then give. The board the, the opportunity to actually make a decision, like one way or the other, it's hard, I don't. Particularly in the last case.
I think we had, we had the, we had the team to, if we, if we could have. If we wanted to have enforced the, the process more, it could have been random.
So the structure of the ordinance gives, is, is there, it's vocal practice to decide whether you want to use that structure, is what I'm saying. So you guys decided.
And even if it's not a one, even if it's a one-off, it's a good opportunity to learn and reflect, that's, I mean, that's. I guess what I'm asking that we should do, how could, how, because one-offs. Don't stay one-offs, hundred year floods don't stay hundred year floods, right, so. How does one learn from those experiences then forward?
And they are complex discussions, there's no doubt. That is a complex discussion, it could have been complex if it were a ten lot subdivision out, you know, the Chilwell Road or something like that, so if they're complex, there's a lot of information.
By me.
That you need in order to make good decisions, you know.
Can I switch gears and ask in this section about the guidance phase of the sketch plan review? Is, I guess that's another definition question, because I. I am a little. Concerned, um. About what guidance means and what, how much of, how much guidance an applicant should be entitled to take to the bank, so to speak. Um, and how much is it constraining at all the planning board going forward when it gets. Further into the process, I didn't, so I wondered, for example. Um, it says, the, the planning board will provide guidance as follows, um. It is that a shall or may situation? Or should there be a phrase added that says insofar as practicable or something like that? I ju, I just heard. So it's a de novo. Series of questions on a, on a sometimes very complicated project, the sketch plan review. And for the board to, and they've probably gotten it before the meeting, but for the board to suddenly. Have to look like they're passing judgment on significant aspects of the proposal of the sketch plan. Um, review, um. I'm just wondering what, if it was a way of understanding or defining what everybody's expectations going in and coming out of that process is and what it isn't.
The word guidance is not defined in the.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
I think the, the, the driving term is will or shall or may.
I would have thought it was may rather than, to your point, I think it's. I would have thought it was may rather than, to your point, I think it's, it's may provide. That will indicates that we've got to follow the steps.
And you could say insofar as practicable. I mean, if you can provide it, then you should, and if you. If you don't feel confident doing it at that point, then you shouldn't, but.
There's an awful lot of sketch plans that are like super simple. I'm like, yeah, okay.
Right, but you don't want somebody walking away thinking, got this. You know, right, got this. Yeah, so. Dundee.
Yeah, isn't there somewhere in here that says nothing in this section is?
It shall not be considered the initiation of the review process, processes for the purposes of bringing the plan out of protection of one MRSA. Section three or two, but that's something kind of entirely different for that. I had to go look up what is one MRSA. And that relates to when deadlines and stop tolling and that sort of thing. So.
Yeah, maybe I was just getting confused between existing language versus, uh. No commitment shall be made between the subdivider and the board at this. Purpose of the pre-application procedures is solely to facilitate an understanding of what is proposed. What may be possible and what may be acceptable. That is section four, one, three, now two. Of the existing ordinance. Which might be some, might be some good language to.
Thank you.
I was actually reading that earlier and I thought it was already in it, so I guess it isn't.
Yeah, I guess I, I also think of the, um. Some of the stuff like going from the sketch plan that. Um, that we allow people to make corrections and adjustments along the way in the sort of. Uh, sketch plan to final plan and. Uh, that we don't, like the attorney during the last one kept on sort of saying, you know. That's the application. You accept it or you reject it. You accept it, but you reject it, and he just. Wanted like you, you, they made a submission and if it's not acceptable, you reject it. That's, that's it. And we were like, well, no, we don't actually do that. We allow for. The changes to happen and. The planning board shall authorize the submission of the final application. Final plan application. Well, that's fine. I just, I, I guess that, that, of this. In this discussion of shall and may and all of this. I just, the sketch plan, I don't think should. Resolve in a sort of locked in, the final plan is the final plan and. You're either, you got it, you nailed it in your final plan after sketch review. And will accept it for if there are any errors in it. Well, too bad, when you reject the whole thing, you'll have to start over.
There is some, there is language in here that's, uh.
Yeah, I think there's something under final plan that says you can add or.
It's six point two, final plan submissions. Final plan submissions show approximate. The layout shown on the sketch plan plus any recommendations made by the planning board. Um, so that's, that's the layout. But that suggests that there certainly is some opportunity to. But that just talks about layout. And recommendations made by the planning board. So if it is something that the applicant themselves. Want to.
Section five, two, four. At the bottom, it says a determination of completeness, and this section does not prevent the planning board from requiring additional materials necessarily.
Right.
The view of this project.
Right. That's why I think you can make that, that completeness review. You don't have to exhaustively go through the whole proposal. You just make sure you got, you got everything there. It's not whether you've got the eyes dolved, the eyes dotted, the teeth crossed. Do you have everything there?
Yeah, I don't.
For us to then act on.
I'm not sure, and this is a question we'd have to ask Andy, but whether or not you could. Go in and say, we've, we've got our final review, we're under, you know, we're complete. We've been going, we've had the public hearing and then, um, all of a sudden we decide we want to drop. A couple lots or something, we want to change this, you know, like you can probably change the road layout to modify that based on. Certain things, but I don't think you can fundamentally change your. Application.
Yeah, and I think we've had that. Those discussions.
But the, the final, when you submit the final plan. You should be able to, beyond just the sketch plan, you should be able to make some modifications.
Yes. I think you can. Not substantive in the way that.
Yes.
Like saying, oh, well, now it turns out you guys are okay with this, and we've had these discussions, we're gonna add two lots.
Yeah, we're actually doing this in pretty motion.
Exactly. I like that, that quiet code. Uh, you know, the way that I've written this is, I, I mean, I kind of like the consolidated feel of the requirement of the sketch plan. I think this. I think the sketch plan, um, having more specificity on what you're looking for in order to make good recommendations in a sketch plan review. Is very helpful, rather than the way that is in the current ordinance, which is very loosey-goosey and you could just like draw anything up on it. You know, of course, you could still draw something up on mapping. But you still want to, like, this is actually requiring somebody to put a little bit more thought into a sketch plan to help. Make informed decisions rather than, which is what most people do anyway, but.
If somebody had the just level of just a, something on a neck, and we have people who come and just say, I just, I have an idea for a project. Give me a slot on the, on the next meeting so I can just discuss it with you.
There's nothing in here that proposes anybody.
Yeah, so they could do that if they're only at that level, and then they gotta. To come up with something for a sketch form.
Yeah, and I, I like the process in other places we've had to do this. Of requiring an applicant to think about, here, here are the waivers, is the waivers that we like to consider. During the process, so we can have a conversation about that. You know, you guys are like, we've never given a waiver, uh, for, um, hydrological assessments before, and. And that is just a no-go. Then that's great to know, because that, we're planning. You know, an applicant is planning their workload based on. The waivers that you're likely to grant.
So the yacht club. The, 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 what provision, you know, their renovation, that wasn't. That's not, that was an example of what you're talking about. Somebody just coming in and. And saying, how should we file this? So what should we do? They haven't filed anything yet.
Yeah, we did that for.
You did that for, yes.
Yeah, for a couple of things, for a mania garden preserve. Yeah. So that happens.
Yeah, 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 and I think that's good.
You don't, this doesn't want any of you to do that.
I, but I think more to your point that the, uh, review of completeness. Needs to just be a review of completeness and not the thorough, methodical. That that's the meat of what we actually do right now, and it just seems so backwards to me.
It should only be, I think you should be saying, you know, in other cases, you're what you're gonna do. List and say, did you submit?
You filled out your name, you got your date on.
Don't even get too far into that.
You know, did you?
It should be a quickie review.
You have the D references in there. You have the standard boundary survey. Like, that's an easy thing to go through. Just be like, you're done, and then.
Submit your plan.
Another. Process, you're gonna get into the more, the substance of whether or not you meet the standards to be.
Yeah, so you're doing it once.
About, it's very narrow, like, in my mind. I'm not a lawyer, I'm only a planner, so, but in my mind, it's like, you've given us. The information that we're, that's required of you for us to make a good decision.
So if we, you have a sketch review and it's. Somebody's just doing the smallest little thing, they just want to divide up whatever, a small little thing. And that, there's really nothing. Not, not, not much to it, so that, uh, goes very quickly. Could we? In the same meeting, then go through the completeness review, so for those little projects that they just, they can. Move this thing through a little quicker bit.
Good question. Uh, I don't think you could do that, but I think that that's something I could look at. Is maybe, maybe we create two-tiered. Review process. We have like a minor, a minor subdivision and a major subdivision that we actually do have a draft.
Well, one person's definition of.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you're gonna, you're gonna know by the size whether you're gonna, right, have. Suddenly have the neighbors show up and say, we hate this idea. And that you have the, the, the sketch plan review ends up being a long meeting. I'm just. Wondering, does each have to be an individual meeting, or could you say, oh, well, the sketch plan went really quickly? Have you? Have you got it all completed? I guess they wouldn't know to have it completed, but may, if it was so simple, maybe they'd know.
I think you have to have, um, have it be a separate. The sketch plan would be, I mean, it could be a real quick sketch plan meeting, and that's be like, great, this is awesome, here's what you need to do, we agree about each other, blah, blah, blah. This is gonna be hopefully pretty easy, and then go to the next.
I mean, we need to remember what, these are not, these are subdivisions we're talking about here. They're not like one person doing a project on a lot. So it, it's not inappropriate to ask for some time to.
No, I think it's, you know, what, basically, the reason I would come in for a subdivision is to say, hey, here's what I want to do. Sketch it out. These are the things that you require in your ordinance that I don't really want to do. Because I don't think they're applicable to helping you review. Do you agree with that? And you say yes or no, then we go back and do the work. Or the, the rest of the work in order to get a full application for you. And we come in, and I would also, it'd be a great time, if you had a major or minor subdivision, that would be the time where you'd say, yes, this is gonna be a minor subdivision, we agree to that. That would be another sketch plan.
I've got, uh, two little things on page twelve. On, uh, five, two, six, A. I wonder if we should, uh, not have gender specific. Is her. In our modern era that we live in. And.
You can say applicant or their.
But any, anything like that, because, you know, it, it doesn't bother me, but, you know, it does, I know people that it bothers them. And, you know, it bothers me that it bothers them, but that's not up to me to make that.
Love it.
And I wonder, uh, and I refer to Kim. On all these days, if that gives you enough days, fourteen days.
I'm not gonna think about it. Cause if I'm gonna be doing it, this isn't gonna bog me down.
They, they seem tight.
So, it, it, along with that, on A, upon a determination of the application is complete, the planning board shall schedule and provide public notice for a meeting. For a meeting of the planning board to review the application. And there's no timeline, you know, like. You determine it's complete, shouldn't the board be required within. Within a certain period of time to schedule it?
I think it's nice to have it open in case, you know, we're super busy and we have one and a half subdivisions we gotta deal with. We could throw, throw about straight. You don't know if we want to commit ourselves to have it a, a hard timeline. It'd be nice for the applicant if we did. But it's nice for us if we don't.
But we always just, uh, once it's, it's all ready to go, it goes on the next available. Planning board slot, right?
Yeah.
All right, I just, I, I noticed that there was no time.
I guess, uh, and it would only, it'd probably run into an issue around Thanksgiving and Christmas when we only have one meeting a month. And then if we had a full agenda.
The last sentence of that, the applicant's authorization must be present at all planning board meetings.
Sorry, can I answer your other question, your first question?
Oh, sure, sir.
Isn't it, um. Okay, so within thirty days of submission of the final application plan, the planning board shall determine that the submission is complete and shall notify the application of writing. And this one is meaning to review the final thing. Okay, so upon that determination. So you have to make that determination?
And then, and then. Right, but, but you're, but the board is not constrained in terms of when. Okay, all right, that's, the second sentence in that, um, it's repetitive of four point one point two. And I, I just, I'm not sure, we want people, reps to show up at all meetings, right? So if we just have like a blanket. Uh, saving of four point one point two, that you, you have to be going this way for all the.
It's just like, put that in, like, right in the loser or something, like, if you submit an application, you need to show up to the meeting. Because every once in a while, we, we have applications. They just didn't.
No, it doesn't get active.
They're like, oh, well, you're gonna review this, like the selectmen or something, and, and I submitted the application, and you guys will sit around and discuss it, and they don't. They don't realize they need to be there.
Okay. Got it.
In C, the, we had talked about. The, um. About the date by which the butters had to be notified. We didn't, whether or not we should be calculating. So you're not leaving a butters finding out at the last minute, or, oh, I put it in the mail. Cause you're not required to prove that they got it.
Right.
So you ought to be required to prove that X number of days before. The hearing, you put this stuff in first-class mail, or some, you put those notices in the mail, otherwise. I'm not, I'm, I'm thinking, mm-hmm, people could have problems from not, not getting.
Just like the town gets their fourteen days, it does seem like the butters should have at least a week.
Yes.
Before the expected arrival date of the letter, whether they get it or not is not under our control, but whether. That, that there should be a timeline for one.
So it's, if, if you've got thirty days to play with there, it from, then why shouldn't they have to mail it twenty-one days before? Within twenty-one, before twenty-one days before they're in. So then a butters, then they got time, it's got time to get there by today's US mail.
It's eight or nine days.
Yeah. Depending on where you're sending it to.
It is, yeah. It's taking eight or nine days to get things?
Yeah, yeah, sometimes.
In what section do you make existing ordinance is?
I'm just looking at this one.
What, I'm just wondering what it said. Okay, the board shall hold a public hearing, it's four point five. Yeah. Also, I, this ordinance switches the responsibility to the applicant, which I may not want to do.
Well, send it to the butters, but I think so the others, yeah, no, they don't send it either, now that's.
Currently.
So the board shall send now.
Show me no such public here in first-class mail to all owners.
Of property in a little thousand, the board doesn't do that.
What's that?
So it's the town.
That's supposed to send notices.
Well, I mean, I think, yes.
So it's not the applicant who's required to send those notices?
Oh, and that makes sense, because it's, the, what the address that is used is the address that's on file. You know, like, if they didn't get it, it's because the address on file wasn't correct, and it wasn't because. The applicant got the address from their friend Mary and Mary had an.
Okay, that, that makes sense. I, I then that, I don't need to.
Push, some of those administrative things. Are better suited for the town. That the application fee should be sufficient to cover the time that it takes to do all that.
Close to.
Hundred dollars a lot.
Right. Five point two point seven, the public hearing must be held in our federal top of town. Must be held within thirty days after the determination of the complete application has been submitted, or within any other time limit which we should agree upon. The purpose of the hearing is to allow the applicant and affected property owners to provide information as part of the record the planning board will use. Who is an affected property owner?
Good question.
Should be, should it simply say the public? Or the representative?
Okay. I don't know.
I guess, uh, yeah, if people feel that they're affected, then they're affected, I guess I don't. But somebody then has to make that determination, how, how am I affected by what's going on in on heelway? I mean, in some as well, I mean, the, I, I think it should be I think it should be more, it'd be clear that it's more inclusive, that you, if you're, if you're in this community and you've got a right to comment. Um, maybe it's, uh, wow, as opposed to saying an affected, uh, affected, also, if I rent in town. Right?
Right.
I should have a right to say something, not just being affected, I, I should not be like, you can only vote if you own property or something, I mean, it should be.
I need to say resident, but they don't necessarily have to be a resident, a file, uh, you know, file of residence be affected.
It's alright, like.
The applicant.
Effective, right?
Yeah.
Affected property owner.
So where do you see, where do you see the edge of the affected being negative?
I think that's, again, I think that's up to the determin, that would be an opportunity for somebody to unduly restrict that, because you've got that language in there. And I don't think that's, yeah, and I don't think it's, we should provide that opportunity.
I think you would wanna be more inclusive of who's affected.
Yes, yes, and I also don't think it should be simply just, well, I, I think in some cases, but like subdivisions, it shouldn't necessarily just be somebody who owns property. They should be someone who lives in the town or has or owns property.
Yeah, let, uh, do some research on that.
Yeah. I mean, there are property owners, obviously, we know who are not residents, but, so you, so you got that, but then you also may have residents who are not property owners.
Then you also might have people who like, rent for six months of the year, so they're not a resident or a property owner.
Right, but they're very affected, right?
Right, right. I don't know how you define that.
Well, you could just say, uh, and, well, you could, eh, you could say members of the public, or members of them not desert.
I think it's, I'll do some research, I think the point is.
Yeah.
That that, it's a, the purpose of the meeting is, and it's a pretty broad thing.
Yes, yes.
So that if somebody gets an objection, the chair can say, well, the purpose is to allow anybody to comment, basically.
Right, and we want people to feel as though it's their community, no matter what part of it you happen to be in. It's not just, well, you're not really attracted by that. You know, it's just, I just, anyway.
Yep, it's good.
Pass another, do we have a expected finished date or finished time?
Well, I was just.
How much time that we wanna put in?
It's seven thirty five right now, we didn't get through section six, but if we could fly through section five, that would be great. Call it.
Yeah, do we have to do all of this tonight? That raises another question, and that is, it would be great if the planning board mapped out their calendar year. Maybe you do, and I'm just not aware of it, but mapped out your calendar year with regard to Luso issues. And figured out how to structure this so that we're not in this situation where like, oh my God, we gotta do special meetings, or we gotta do this, or we gotta do that. We may still have to do those. But if we had if we thought about how things were gonna come up and how we needed to be working on things like this, we wouldn't be at like the last minute trying to.
My suggestion is that you say, we have once a month, every month, the Luso committee meeting, and the Luso committee really should be that's like, uh, we should, we advertised it already, but it should be like a joint meeting to talk about. You know, the reason why the Luso committee meeting was formed way back when was because the planning board didn't have time to do actual planning, cause you were like inundated by applications.
Right.
So we, the town formed the Luso committee to help facilitate, you know, the planning that was necessary to make the, continue to make the ordinance better. There's still that little weird thing in the ordinance that we have to come back and the planning board has to have a public hearing on.
Yes.
My least favorite thing is to come to the planning board, and having not had a planning board members come to all the work that is done to get there, so, and my suggestion would be that you should consider that to be the time where you work on Luso stuff.
It's the Luso Advisory Board, actually, isn't it? It's the title of the board, so, yeah, we should be.
So, and you're on it now, you're on it now, I'm on it now.
And I'm attending.
And you're attending, yeah. So.
Yeah, and I guess that's, it's, it's mostly a kind of a mental, and it's, it is a bit of a discouragement, which we don't need for people to sign up for the planning board, but that, that being on the planning board means that you're on the Luso.
You're not, it is not required to be on, but I think, I would say.
But I guess that's where we've had a problem, cause they separated it and was like, well, that's what that committee is dealing with, so we'll just step back and we're just finding like, that, they don't know what we know, they don't, they're not.
Can I tell you how many boards you get elected to when you get, when you get elected to the school board? I only manage, yeah.
Well, and also, I guess it's, it's also to, if we could, I think we could, just to make it clear to everyone that if you're on the planning board, that you're on the Luso committee. But it doesn't mean that you have to show up to every meeting. Like, planning board, we're in a, we're in a predicament. It's an issue if you don't show up to a meeting. Whereas Luso could be, you're inherent, just because it's never really struck me that I needed to.
I think it's very helpful.
Yeah. It's very helpful, but of all the things that I have to do.
Yep, I get it.
There's a committee that's taking care of it, and so it always fell to, I've got something else I can do tonight, you know?
But then we don't get to sit at these meetings and say, the planning board meetings and say, well, then, you know, we need to have input into this because we're working with these ordinances and we're seeing what the problems are. And so we need to make all these changes, so we can't kinda have our cake and eat it too on that topic.
Right.
I just say one thing?
Yes.
Uh, those are all on YouTube as well, all recordings.
Yep.
So, I mean, it, tell me about it. But, um, you can watch them too.
Yeah, yeah.
Just throwing that out, it's another night.
But I, I certainly, it would just sort of change the mentality of things if it was a, the planning board is part of the Luso committee, there are other people on the Luso committee, but inherently, the planning board is the Luso committee plus other people.
I think, yeah, the, the planning board is part of the Luso committee.
Right.
Yep.
That we, yeah, right, uh, so it's, it's, but it's.
And there are things that, like this thing right here. We've talked about subdivision ordinance at the Luso level, the committee level for a while, and I think we just made, I made the decision really just to say, look, this is, we don't need to spend time on Luso, at the Luso committee level going over the subdivision ordinance.
Right.
Particularly since we all just went through one, this makes more sense. So we may continue to have workshops like this, where, but, let's just let the planning board iron that out. And then, I think where the Luso is a very valuable thing is it's more helpful to think about policy decisions, because some of the Luso changes, we're making policy to put in front of the town, and it's good to have more input, and that's why I think the Luso committee is actually kind of good. Think that, cause you get input from other people on policy, whereas you guys are, you're applying the policy, so it's helpful and I respect, but it's also good to have other people saying, well, I don't really like the way that that policy was written, so let's talk about it, we change it.
Right, I, I don't think you can do one without the other, you can't, it's gotta, it's gotta be informed by how, how the rubber needs to load.
Yeah.
Can I just make some comment about twenty-seven on page nineteen? Getting all the way to the end of six.
Oh, boy.
You need to be, you need to add the word require. The planning board may require the applicant.
Where are we at, twenty-seven?
Page nineteen.
Oh, page nineteen.
Sorry, number twenty-seven, yeah, you just left a word out. Not controversial, I don't think.
They've written evidence that all required what, number twenty?
The planning board may what the applicant.
May require.
Yep, got it. Perfect.
Okay.
That's the gate, we went all the way through six.
There you go.
Yeah.
Thanks to me, we almost didn't. I agree, I know that I'm bringing like challenging questions at times about stuff, and I really appreciate your forbearance, I do that, I mean, I just, my goal is to try to be part of a planning board that is able to handle this stuff and still not feel like it's gasping for air and feel like you've come out whole and, and at the end of the process and not feel like you just went through a war. Cause that just, that came across watching that process, so that, you know.
I don't think there was, they, I don't think there was any getting away in a, in a community this size, there were people that were so fired up about that issue and throwing hate around town.
You know, uh, there's only so much you can do about that, I mean, and, and do your job, and. I just had somebody say, oh, I know you, I saw you on television, I said, alright, you, you don't know me from television, that's very flattering, but I'm not, I'm like, oh, no, I mean on Zoom, oh.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
I've heard you, I've read you in the newspaper before, I'm like, oh, that.
Yeah.
Isn't it a police beat? That's good. But, anyway, let's, um, so, we need to do a continuance, I think.
All through.
All through.
Keep going.
Oh, I thought we were just.
Well, we made it through number seven, we made it through number six.
Oh, that's it?
That was the agenda, that was all we had.
You gotta go?
Well, that was the agenda.
That's the agenda.
Yeah.
We made it through six. Got it.
I really like the, the format of that, of six. Um, I do think it would be great to come up with, it doesn't have to be an actual part of the subdivision ordinance, but a streamlined flow chart.
Yes.
The timelines, you know, sort of, cause they're not in here.
Yep.
For what, what everybody can expect for the whole process.
Yeah, an application to create it for a subdivision.
I haven't created an application yet. But there will be a lot like this chart right here.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So, would you wanna schedule another meeting, or are we, we need to do? Now, we also have public workshops. Scheduled for uh, what is it, February fourteen, twenty-eight, public hearings.
That's what this, the, the, the planning board public hearings?
Yep.
Okay. When, when we scheduled.
So what else do we need to discuss?
That's February fourteen.
Next meeting for the sub, for the subdivision ordinance, we need to discuss sections seven through.
The rest of it.
The rest of sixteen.
Okay, and when we made this meeting, we had discussed what the follow-up.
Yeah. Did we set another meeting?
We, well, we have a planning board meeting next, on the tenth, are we gonna be able to do any of it then? Is the agenda.
Here's the agenda.
Right.
Two things. We can definitely use a convocation.
And in a U of it.
Yes, I mean, on. We could, uh, just.
Oh, it's fencing the wall and animal husbandry, I, I would think that would, the stick.
A bit of tongue.
And never know.
Yeah, it could be pigs.
I'll just pencil it in, you wanna? Continue it.
Try to continue it, and then.
Yeah.
Oh, we can bring it up on the other.
Bring it up on the other business. Other, other, of the business, and go as long as we can to finish it. Will, will we have to do more ordinance issues other than the subdivision?
No.
At this, in this board?
We have a lot of land use, none of that kind of report.
That's gonna be none of that with, in February, but we're targeting about the Luso.
Okay. And, yeah, that is the sixteen.
Oh. Okay, so, oh, it's my dog's right, it's great. So, so this will do seven through sixteen, if we can fit it in at the end of the, uh, January tenth meeting?
Yeah, yes, yeah, okay. Which is next week, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, about as fast as we can do it, so.
Okay, um, so, could someone make a, a motion to continue it to that date certain?
Do we need to do that, or can we?
No, no, cause we've completed this agenda.
Oh. So, we're gonna be just doing, it's doing.
So gonna you do it under the other section, and that we can make an announcement of that at the beginning of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I think so, yeah.
So you could write it in under other on your.
We're actually not even, this is a, we're not even making, and not taking any votes or anything, that, never so far. Right, this is just like, the people, this is a, but this is a watch out, yeah, so.
I would rather have the subdivision ordinance right this time around.
Yes.
Like, try to. I mean, it would be great, and our goal is to get it at the town, but I'd rather try to put something through that isn't right.
Right. Yeah, I'm gonna flee. So the question is, we, I've made a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, we are adjourned.
Union.
Thank you, everybody, thank you, all the, uh, people who just hung up the phone there. Yeah, thank you all.
Good night.
Thank you. Well, that was a lot more creative than the last time I was a chairperson.
And we saw on.
Yeah, I can't get the arrow to go down.